Oh, you do, if you have problems. I don't know how you'd have problems during an election year. I'll guarantee you the company's better.
That's what I'm thinking.
Yeah.
I love the way it is in your office.
Oh.
How are you?
Who are ya, number one?
He's here to vote. Let him vote.
He don't, he don't vote.
Haven't seen him for a long time.
So, I guess, uh, I guess Hillary Clinton won the whole vote then, since she voted, huh?
Hey, have you been air shooting?
Yes, sir.
Have ya? Good. Did you go down south?
Uh, well, I did Phoenix twice last year.
Nice.
Utah, a big one.
Salt Lake?
Yeah. Uh, I did the, uh, National Benchress Championships.
How'd you do?
They only paid for three, but I...
What would, what did third pay, do you know?
Uh...
How much money? Hundreds? Thousands? Oh, look at, oh my gosh! Haven't you run him off yet? If you'd run him off, I'd move in.
Warren Colonel.
How we doing Dallas, I said, hey? Keeping out of trouble?
Yeah. Probably right. So, yeah, you think they pay hundreds of dollars for third place, or...
Uh, I think it was...
Okay. So, it's not like NASCAR?
The big one in Utah, this year, so, twenty dollars and a couple plus.
No, it's okay. It's, no, I mean, you can't hear anything about it.
Wow.
I have a sneaky suspicion of booze going on.
Oh, you do already, huh? Yeah. Wow. Oh, really? Wow.
Took him two years to get approved to come to Phoenix last year.
Well. I love that shooting range down there north of Scottsdale. That's a great, great facility.
And I know too, but we're still waiting.
Oh, we are? Oh, my gosh. Okay, we good? I had, yeah, I thought we were... Yeah.
Make them do the pledge for us.
The, yeah, the Custer County Board of County Commissioners meeting will come to order. Let the record show that today is twenty-eight. The time is nine. Apologize for the late start. We had a little technical issues on live streaming. Uh, Commissioner Candor, would you care to lead us in the pledge, please?
Sure. Aye.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir. I was actually asked to lead the pledge of allegiance at a board meeting the other day for the first time. I don't know that I've ever been asked, so it was very strange.
Well, let's ask him to do it the next time around.
Yeah, we can do that. We'll ask you more often.
I didn't say anything, but I wanted to tell the chairman, I believe that's the first time anybody's ever asked me to lead the pledge.
And you knew it.
Um, Madam Clerk to the Board, would you conduct the roll call, please?
Commissioner Flower.
Present.
Commissioner Candor.
Here.
Commissioner Prince.
Here.
Attorney General Clint Smith.
Present.
And Clerk to the Board Kelly Camper.
I know it. Thank you, ma'am. Appreciate that. Amendments to the agenda, gentlemen?
I have none, sir. Amendments to the agenda?
Are, are we supposed to turn these on and leave them on, or...
Yeah, I just leave mine on.
See? Oh, but yours, you get to be.
Karen said when they're all on all the time, it creates some sort of over something. So, they say when you're not using it, but you three use yours all the time.
Okay. Check, check. I'm good.
Amendments to the agenda, sir?
None.
Thank you. Uh, I, I have an item. I think I'm gonna probably bring it up under Commissioner Items instead of trying to add it to the agenda because of the twenty-four hour notice. Uh, so we'll talk about that when we get there. So, I, nor do I. Approval of the minutes, uh...
I move we approve those, uh, January thirty-first, February fourth, fifth, thirteenth, and nineteenth. We had a slug of them.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
We moved a second to approve the minutes, uh, January thirty-first, February fourth, February fifth, February thirteenth, and February nineteenth. I reviewed those. We had one little minor something or others. I don't even remember what it was now, but Kelly had fixed that, so...
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, that's right. Further discussion, hearing none, we proceed to vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Posnay, motion carries. Commissioner Items? Prince, would you like to begin, sir?
I'd be happy to. I don't have a lot to report, 'cause I had a wonderful time visiting with my kids and grandkids this past week. However, while I was gone, I did have a meeting with the Upper Arkansas Area Council Governments. It was their board meeting. Um, I tried to do it by phone. I, it was so sketchy on and off as I was traveling between Raton and Amarillo. Gave up, so I kinda met that meeting. And of course, yesterday, we all attended the Justice Center meeting. I'm really pleased that we have a positive move. We're moving forward on that. We have action happening. That's great. And then, of course, we met with the ambulance, uh, the hospital, um, board yesterday evening to discuss our ambulance issues in the eastern portion of the county. Actually, it's ambulance issues throughout the county is what we discussed. So, that's all I really did.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Sir.
Commissioner Candor?
Sure. Um, several things happened. I'm just gonna hit the highlights here. Uh, we had the airport board meeting at five-thirty in the evening, which I thought went really well. It was really dark when we got out. It was seven-thirty. I think, Tom, you were there too, right? And, uh, we discussed, uh, you know, the, the way ahead. Jackie was there working leases with them, and they're gonna come back with us with the plan. Uh, OT six did ask for, uh, us to consider where they'd put a hangar, so they're looking at a jet line possibly south from the ramp running south up against the fence. Only issue there that, uh, is concerning people, and Lynn Legree brought it up, was, um, if we go for a future runway where it ought to be, and that would have planned to be to the e, to the east of the current runway. And if that's the case, then that kinda blocks that. So, uh, the other options which have happened with the CDOT is to move the highway, which could happen in the future. But we're talking way down the road. They did that at Vail, uh, in Gypson. The airport there was just a little, and I was there in the eighties. It was a gravel runway. And, uh, when Vail started developing further, uh, to the, you know, all their areas, a lot of people. And they actually did move, uh, County Road out of the way and, and, um, put it parallel to the hot, the interstate. They bring in seven thirty-sevens in there. Anyway, those are some things that they'll, they'll be considering and talk about with us later, as well as, um, working OT six on their, their agreements. We gotta get it nailed down, um, on the grant process and what, uh, who owes, who, how, how that works, so... Asked them for a meeting, uh, Tuesday, Wednesday, and, uh, they responded that they were gonna get back to us, and they haven't done that yet, to both Brian Anderson and I. Uh, also worked the Upper Ark Blue Line Expansion Committee. Um, and, uh, that went very well. There was a lot of activity that they reported, and they're resolving a lot of the water, issues, one-on-one with people as they go along. One of significance was, uh, that I thought was noted, was the issue of drilling wells without replacement water behind it. And so, that was an issue down here by Great Creek in particular, and there's nothing behind it. So, they did, uh, they did put a, uh, a lot of effort in that and, uh, have restricted that. So, there's, there's options there. So, when they, when we get the minutes from that meeting, I'll forward it to, to the board here. Uh, and there was quite a few other discussions, and, and at the end, Donnie Camper made a point that everybody agreed with, and that they all learned an awful lot from the meeting at the time. Didn't mean that they're gonna drop anything. They're still trying to resolve the issues to make it, uh, compatible with everybody. Uh, Justice Center meeting, you've mentioned, that was, that really was good, and I think we're, uh, on the way. We'll, we'll bring that out as soon as we can and get, I guess, what the plan is to get an RFP on the street by the, was it Thursday we agreed, or was it Friday? Next, uh, month.
Thursday.
Thursday?
Thursday.
And so, we'll see what they bring back to us. A hospital district meeting last night was scheduled for about an hour, I think they thought, and we went the full two hours and busted through another meeting that, uh, was on the table for affordable housing, I mean. Uh, I think it got off okay. Uh, I think we ended up with five actions, one of which we, we took on was a county-only solution, and we, we need to get the data together for that. I'll work with Clint if you want me to, to, to see what, uh, what that means if we were to take it on, so that the committee that was set up, there's five people on the committee, uh, can have the data that we get from that, that option to consider in their, uh, their evaluation of all options to bring back to both boards. Um, and then, uh, we had, uh, fiber optic, uh, activity. Uh, I saw the email from Vogel, uh, Ch, Charles Vogel. They got the grant, you saw that, I think, to, uh, to, uh, go do the engineering and build the business cases that they were lacking still. So, I don't know what the schedule's gonna be. We probably oughta ask them to tell us what, what they're planning.
He's gonna report that to us.
Is he? When? I haven't heard from him.
Uh, I think we'll put him on Thursday. I don't remember.
Did ya? So, they're gonna... Okay. Right. And, uh, and the, uh, so that's the tower end of things, the fiber part of it, uh, I did forward you all the copy of the progress report to Carmel. In progress, the other thing I gotta work with him, they need some data on numbers of residences, uh, some other questions they had, and I'll go talk to J.D. to get with, uh, with them on that.
Yeah, those numbers, I don't know what he wants, but they're probably available in the most recent housing study.
I think so. All he needs are family units, those, those kinds of things, taxpayers. So, all right, and that's, oh, we had a nice little seance with the new bank owner last night. And, uh, Virginia was there, uh, you know, all the customers that, uh, that bank is servicing.
Which bank are we talking about?
Uh, our new bank.
United.
United Bank, Business Bank.
'Cause there's another new one coming. That's the only real name.
Yeah, and then there's, uh, I understand that one, and I can't remember the name of it now.
Kirkpatrick or something like that.
It's a private, uh, deal. It sounded like it to me.
Branch Bank from Kirkpatrick, Colorado Springs.
Yeah, Springs. Yeah, that's what it was. So, anyway, that, uh, that was a interesting time, but, uh, a lot of, I was glad to see some of the people that came and renew old acquaintances like...
Debbie Hyden Good.
That's all I've got.
Okay, thank you. I'll just go through my calendar real quick, and I've got some other things. Uh, our last commissioner meeting, of course, was the nineteenth, so, uh, that afternoon, I attended a weed board meeting that was held here. They did not have a quorum, so they didn't conduct any business. Uh, the twentieth, attended the airport board meeting. February twenty-first, attended the Fair Board meeting, or I attended a meeting with Fair Board representatives and representatives from CU Denver. We've been Colorado Springs. Jeffrey Lee had three of his, two of his students with him. So, we're continuing to move forward on trying to come up with a viable plan to expand, uh, some kind of a building out there at the Fair Grounds. February twenty-fourth, I attended the Central Front Range Transportation Planning Region Meeting in Canyon City, uh, wrapping up the final drafts on two documents, uh, that Governor Polis has requested from all the regions, uh, on the five- and ten-year, uh, plan for, uh, work plan, basically, for CDOT, so... Uh, twentieth, I attended the airport board meeting as well. Uh, February twenty-first, sorry, going backwards here. On the twenty-fifth, uh, I was in Buena Vista for another meeting and had some downtime, so I ran out and toured the Central Colorado Regional Airport. Thought that was interesting. Um, they are owned by the city of Buena Vista. And so, if you get a chance, I would encourage you to stop by there. They've, they've got, uh, quite a deal going. Somehow, they got tied into a company that does some testing on helicopters. And so, they had two helicopters there last summer, most of the summer, some HALO testing and, and instrumentation, and, and so it was, it was interesting, so... Um, also attended the Justice Center, uh, meeting on the twenty-fifth, and then the, uh, clinic board meeting yesterday, as well as that United Business Bank meet and greet, so, uh, seemed like it's been a busy month for me. And then, uh, I just wanna mention again the Waterline, um, meeting today at two-thirty. Everything we talked about too, but it ended up being two-thirty. I think all the players are gonna be there with the exception of, Dave Schneider, or, sorry, Mike Carter, but he's sitting his, uh, replacement. Uh, and then, I just wanted to, a couple of comments. I got in on the tail end of the attainable housing meeting yesterday, and so they are moving forward. Uh, they're actually writing an RFP for bids to purchase those lots in Silver Cliff, so we're gonna have that on our desk one of these days. I asked them if they had deed restrictions included, or the plans were to include some deed restrictions, and, uh, they indicated that, yes, there are going to be, it was at the tail end of the meeting. I didn't ask them which ones, so... Uh, it'd be interesting to see what that RFP comes back. I just gently asked them if they were planning on going through the county commissioner, uh, board to move forward with all that, and they said absolutely. They, they have a committee that's gonna write the RFP. It'll come to us for review, and then if we approve it, then they'll put it out. And then, of course, same with any contracts that they give back.
Were there any questions? Are they...
No, no. Again, I got in there late on the meeting. I just said, you know, I'm assuming you're gonna run that through the county commissioners, and they said yes.
What kind of restrictions?
Well, I'm very interested in what kind of deed restrictions end up being in that RFP. Certainly, I would expect, uh, some kind of language in there about what kind of buildings they can build, um, how much those buildings can hit the market at. I'm as, I always assumed it was gonna be single-family dwellings. I don't think that's gonna be the case now, but it's probably multifamily. Yeah, some kind of a multifamily. Uh, it probably won't be condos, probably townhomes, it's my guess, or apartments. I don't know.
One of the things that we've discussed at that group multiple times, and I didn't make the meeting yesterday. I figured it was over by the time we, we left, was that the deed, one of the deed restrictions would limit the resale of that, so people can't buy the discounted amount, and then flip it and make a big profit at, at retail price. We're gonna work that out, but that's a concern.
Right. So, yeah, and then they talked about the purchase price of those lots in this RFP with preference most likely be, be given to, uh, anybody that wanted to purchase all of the lots, so, uh... Yeah, I just think we need to really pay attention to what those deed restrictions look like and, uh, and then kinda how that sets us up to move forward. So, there are seven more of those lots available. Um, I think, I don't know, we'll just see what the, what those deed restrictions come back, or the RFP altogether. They're gonna set up the terms, uh, price of those lots and so on and so forth, so... Uh, then the other thing I had under, uh, commissioner meetings was amending resolutions twenty-dash-zero-five and twenty-dash-zero-six. If you gentlemen could pull those up real quick. Uh, they're not in the board packet, but, um, let me pull mine up here. So, the problem with these resolutions, uh, that we voted on on the nineteenth is some language in the first whereas statement. And it happens to be the same for both. So, the, the statement says, whereas a county is setting aside funds to meet future financial obligations for the construction of a landfill expansion. And then twenty-oh-six, it says basically the same thing for construction of the Justice Center. My concern here is that, uh, I think we need to add some language so that we're not limited to expend those dollars strictly on the construction of either one of those projects. We may, uh, I mean, there's a myriad of circumstances that come up. We might wanna spend that money on something else rather than just the construction. We may wanna buy furniture for the Justice Center. We may wanna put a sign up on the new landfill expansion. We may have to pay for a permit. So, uh, I'd like to handle these individually. Go ahead, sir, before I make a motion, if you have a comment.
No, I'm fine with it. I was just gonna make a suggestion, but it's fine.
Oh, go ahead, go ahead.
You know, we changed the construction to, for the benefit, for the sole benefit of, and then name, and then name the landfill or the Justice Center. We know it's dedicated solely for that, but it's for the benefit of, it could be whatever we feel's appropriate. So, it's just a thought. If we change that, it, it probably'd work. That's an excellent point that you brought up. I'm glad you saw that, because someone could easily challenge us if we did something other than construction. What is construction? Now, that's a good point.
Yeah, and Virginia's the one that brought it to my attention, Kelly, uh, and so we talked about it.
Thanks, Virginia.
So, I would, I would move that we amend resolution twenty-dash-zero-five. I'm gonna call these paragraphs. In the second paragraph, after the word construction, to add the words and for other project-related expenses.
Well, I like, I like Jay's, uh, 'cause the project could be construed to be just the construction or whatever. He, 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 that proposal you did, Jay, sort of opened it up.
I just said for the be, for the sole benefit of, and then just take away construction, and then...
Take construction completely out of it?
Sure, take it, take it out.
Okay, I would withdraw my amendment. Um, so if you wanna make a stab at it, Commissioner Prince, you'd be more than welcome.
I, I move.
So, we're gonna strike something, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Sorry, I didn't find it right away. So, I move that we amend twenty-dash-zero-five, paragraph two, um...
Why, by striking construction?
Yeah.
We're gonna leave that in there, right?
Financial obligations for the strike to work construction benefit of, for the sole benefit of.
Okay, all right. So, I'll second it. They moved and seconded to, to amend twenty-dash, twenty-dash-zero-five, to strike the word construction and insert the word sole purpose.
I'll second it.
I second it.
You already seconded it, okay.
Discussion? So, then I, I believe it was read, whereas a county is setting aside funds to meet future financial obligations for the sole benefit of a landfill expansion.
I like it, and I appreciate Mr. Rio finding out.
Yeah, that's a good, good catch.
Further discussion? Hearing none, we proceed to vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Posnay, amendment carries. Uh, that statement will now read, for the sole benefit of a landfill expansion. Good. Good morning, sirs, and ma'am. How are you? Then I would move to amend resolution twenty-dash-zero-six, paragraph two, strike the word construction, and insert sole benefit.
I, uh, second it.
They moved and seconded to amend the second, or amend resolution twenty-dash-zero-six. Discussion? Hearing none, we'll proceed to vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Posnay, amendment passes. I did. You want me to send them to you? Okay, underneath the resolution number? Or out to the right-hand side?
Left side of the resolution?
Left side of, so it says amended resolution twenty-oh-five.
Yeah, they've been... Give me just a second. Do we need a date at the top, amended?
Just in the signature lines, good enough.
Okay. Down at the bottom. Signature line two, then, so that becomes the twenty...
Just the date part of it?
I'm sorry, not the signature line, the date of the signature page. So, would that be approved and adopted, or amended and adopted? 'Cause we have amended at the top, but...
You're approving the amendment. Amendment is approved and adopted.
All right, give me just a second, and I'll clean this up, and then I can send those both to you. Can we have some silence, and, uh, yeah, hold it down, please? I was told this morning I need to bring joy into people's lives. That was a weak attempt at doing that, sir.
Was that from Karen? Did you take it, Karen?
Yeah, did you take it, that I was trying to... Gentlemen, would you also like this, uh, CC to you, please? Counsel?
Uh-huh, no, it's good.
You'll get it eventually.
Yeah, they're all online. I don't know, maybe they're not all online, but I don't need it. No, we don't. The ordinance is going.
All right, well, I have sent those to you, so you should have... Morning.
Sir.
That's all I had under... Anything else, gentlemen, before we move on?
No, sir.
Uh, Upper Ark Report, Commissioner Candor, you reported you attended that meeting. Anything else?
No.
Okay.
Attorney Item?
At our meeting last week in Wetmore, you authorized filing of a lawsuit, uh, for planning and zoning issue, which I had that all prepared, and at the last minute, Laura from Jackie's office contacted me and said this individual had contacted them, promised to be in to pay, uh, by March sixth, so we're holding off until then to see if he actually comes through finally. Yeah, and I guess, I mean, that was just coincidence. I'm sure he wasn't watching the commissioners. Were you even aware of this, or is Laura going behind your back? Okay, now, we're talking about, uh, I don't wanna mention names.
No, we're not talking about the person that voted. We're talking about...
No, we're talking about the other one that did...
Same name as our...
The one you asked him about.
Yeah. So, but, and then we still have the other one for today.
Oh, I'm confused. You're right on. Sorry.
The same name as our chair.
Yeah.
All right. Not viral. So, but that's all ready to go, and, uh, it took me a little while to, 'cause this is a district court. It would be a district court lawsuit if it's filed. Uh, but now I have a good template that I can use in the future when we're going after all these SCOFF laws. They're just, ignore Jackie, so...
Easy to do.
Yeah. No, not for me, it's not.
Actually, not for anybody.
I attended the, uh, Justice Center meeting yesterday. I'm sorry if I dominated the conversation, but...
Well, we're good over it.
Uh, and the, uh, meeting with the hospital district yesterday afternoon. We have an agenda item for another lawsuit. I actually, I got that all prepared and everything, so, you know... So, you know, once we talk about that, if you authorize it, we can go forward. And then finally, our sheriff asked me to write a letter for him. He's, and I think you were aware of this because of our activist subdivision that has decided they don't think livestock, that open range doesn't apply to their subdivision. And.
Are they still pressing it?
Well, they, Shannon has talked to them a few times and he sent them, I thought, which was a very good email explaining open range and everything, but they, they found a statute that they thought they could hang their hat on and I, so I gave him a legal interpretation of the statute. In this letter I wrote that that did not stand for what they say. Because one of the things they, they were saying, I'm just quoting this in their email. They said, open range does not mean that a stockman can simply allow his livestock to run at large without penalty. And I said, that's precisely what it means.
What do you think? It's your obligation to keep him out.
But I, I mean, I guess I'm getting a little concerned. We may have a range war on our hands here and may have to bring in Tom Horn Jr. But, because they said, one of their things that they said was organized recovery of the cattle by the owner or any agent or agent of the owner or law enforcement officer will not be allowed without permission from the property owners and no use, no use of machinery or horses will be allowed. I don't know how they think somebody's gonna run on foot.
I don't know where they thought they moved to. Where, where they think they are, in Oregon?
Yeah, and I just said interference with a livestock owner who's attempting to retrieve his cattle from open range could subject your property owners to criminal penalties. So Shannon was gonna send that out to them and we'll see where things go from there. But it's, it's the, the tension now, you know, with all that area's been subdivided and they think that there, there just shouldn't be livestock there, even though I emphasize, same thing Shannon did. You have to fence them out if you don't want them on your property. And let's see, I almost finished working on my cure for coronavirus and other than that, I don't think I've done anything else in the past week.
Been pretty busy.
I can't, can't thank you enough for that report, sir. I waited for baited breath to see if the administrative assistant has anything.
Anything.
You're good? I, I almost thought that's what you were probably gonna say.
Why don't you tell us about your unbelievably big monitor?
Oh, I got a new monitor.
Nice.
I want one.
Yes. That's right, thank you. Public comment? Hearing none will move on unfinished business. I have a question. I'm a little late bringing this up. Ms. Kelly? Um, I read, yeah, I'll just pull it up real quick. I read in our minutes that we said we didn't have any questions about, so I apologize for that. On February the nineteenth. What my fellow commissioners think about this? When I read in your minutes that during unfinished business Lisa Drew brought up her comments about reach. I thought it was under public comment. But now that I read these, I can't seem to get my eye on it right off the bat.
Not in unfinished business.
Yeah, and that's right, and that's what.
And it didn't show up on this hard copy?
It is under public comment here, so maybe I was daydreaming. What's the date of it?
February the nineteenth. Is that what you're looking at?
No, minutes, well, yes, so what's under public comment, second page, I think.
Public comment, second, well, second page didn't have it at all here. It's under a public comment.
It's on the first page, okay, all right.
It's not on the last. I looked at the.
Okay, right, okay, so disregard. I don't know how I had that in my mind, that that was, that she brought that up under unfinished business and I thought, no.
She tried and you said you're gonna have your chance.
So, anyway, okay.
Can I bring up a, a question? I had a constituent ask about, I think we called Telephone Hill. In a major snowstorm, his TV went out and he calls Road and Bridge because he thought they were responsible. And I explained to him that, I believe that he was, he was really upset because he couldn't get a hold of anybody. I explained to him, look, everybody is out except the receptionist, plowing snow. Your TV's gonna come second to that. But my real question is who is responsible for the maintenance and the upkeep of the TV antennas up there?
Right, it's a great question. We do know. Historically, Road and Bridge via Roger Squire has done that. And do we have care of the agenda for March fifth? I don't seem to have it in my board packet. Unless, hold on just a second, it, yeah. I just wondered, because while you were asking that, I thought we gotta put that on the staff report for Road and Bridge and have that conversation with Gary to see if Vince is gonna take over that responsibility or if we need to do something different.
See, he knows he has to maintain the road. I don't know that he knows he has to open the cabinet up and turn on a reset button or whatever.
But his question was who maintains it? If it's just a reset button and we push a while and maintain the road, I'm fine.
Roger Squire has done that historically, so.
Got it. I'll, I'll respond and tell him we're putting it on the agenda, work on it.
Okay, yeah, so during the staff report for Gary, just, you might put on there yeah, TV Hills responsibility or, well, it's not TV Hills.
Whatever the mountain is.
Lookout Mountain.
Lookout Mountain.
Yeah, that was called TV.
So, yeah, maintenance of antenna on Lookout Mountain is actually what we need to know.
Formerly known as Hibbs Peak.
I'll respond to, was that on the fifth that's coming? Does that need to have to be the fifth? Okay, I'll tell him it's on for the fifth then.
So, it's a good point.
Thank you.
Tell.
I didn't really know what to tell him. Good, thank you. I will get back to him.
Oh, well, yeah, he's, you're telling the guy who called you.
Oh, I'm just gonna, I'm just gonna talk to the constituent that called me and he was.
Gary's probably out working on the roads.
I am happy to hear that. You know, it was kind of interesting. If it wasn't a big snowstorm, I said, I would've said, well, I'll call Gary and find out what the story is, but I wasn't gonna bother anybody.
Yeah, okay, next item of business, review vouchers. We'll move on then to new business and the first item of business is review the vouchers. Any questions about those, gentlemen?
I have one and it's, it's very minor, but it just kind of jumped out at me. Vail grant training reimbursement to a lady who's not a county employee for a hundred and forty dollars. Do we know what that is? Does that make any sense to anybody?
The veil grant, the victim's assisted, victim's assistant law enforcement grant?
Yes, that's it. But it's training. We paid a hundred and forty dollars to this lady right there.
Yeah, the grant paid a hundred and forty dollars to send somebody to training.
And that's fine.
It wasn't for her.
Uh, yes, she is part of that.
I'm fine, thank you. I just, it just looked different to me.
Good.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Kennedy?
Did she receive the training? Is that what that was?
Yeah.
Any questions, Commissioner Kennedy?
No.
I just counted when you said you had a question. I thought, oh, let's see, because there was something about this set of vouchers. I had seventeen questions that I met with Donna about and got almost all of those answered. Most of that was, those questions came from my ignorance about some stuff that I just didn't, I didn't even know I was ignorant about that, but. So I had a question about why we have two propane companies, one servicing the valley and one servicing Wetmore.
Wetmore is a different one, I noticed.
And they are different company names, but they are owned by the same individual, which I didn't know that. Blue Flame services down there because they're closer, although another propane company drive right by the county shop to come up here. And then, of course, Norup services up here and, and I'm assuming, I just don't remember us looking at the bids for propane companies. So that was a question I had to, about do we.
Well, we, we didn't because that was historically what it was.
I think we should.
Do we renew it every year? Is that what you're thinking?
I'm guessing we do because I don't remember considering any bids from the propane companies.
It certainly makes sense. We do it for trash. We do it for other.
Newspapers.
Yeah, we do it for.
Tanks, because there would be a big expense.
Yeah, it depends on the, the ownership of the tanks.
They're leasing the tanks.
Well, leasing the tanks, then that's different, but. And then I had some questions on the whole Century Link AT&T thing. I just, I looked at that bill for AT&T and went, oh, my gosh. Thought that was kind of wild, but, morning, sir.
Morning. Well, we probably have a discussion on it because maybe timeframes, if, if I was a propane company and the tank issue is an issue, the cost of running the tank in and out of there even on a lease may not be worth the while for a one-year gig. I don't know. Maybe make it a two, three-year renewal or something. Those are things to think about.
I think Council has a really good point. It's not so simple as just saying, okay, it's yours now because of those tanks.
If we own the tanks, it would be a simple thing.
Correct. There would be no problem.
You know, but in this day and age, the propane is a commodity. I'd hate to put a three-year contract out on propane not knowing what the prices are.
Well, I don't mean locking in a price. I mean.
Do we lock pay?
Lock it, you know, we always have the option to go with, I don't know whether we have been with their program to make a payment, prepay it. But my point is, it wouldn't matter. You, you're paying the market price if it goes up and down regardless to me. And so if you lock, I wouldn't want to lock in a price for three years, I would say.
I'm just the opposite, Phil. I understand what you're saying. If I know I can lock in a specific price for the, I do this in my home and my store. If I lock in a price for the whole year.
For the year is fine.
I can budget it and it's fine.
Right, no, I'm fine with that.
He's saying not for three years.
Oh, for three years?
We wouldn't do it for three years and.
And I wouldn't support.
I'm sorry, I misunderstood.
Yeah, I wouldn't support contracting with a company for three years either because.
It just depends on what the.
It all comes down to price, right?
That depends. That's what drives their price, what they would bid, see is my point.
Got it.
Did you see the voucher for this thermostat?
I did, and I said, well, I probably need to buy one. I don't know what that was all about.
The voucher said thermostat from an electrician here, eight hundred dollars.
Yeah.
Boy, that is an expensive thermostat. So I went back and dug the voucher out. It was actually for eight thermostats and the installation of the wiring.
That sounds reasonable.
So I thought that was reasonable, yes. And I've still got to track down safety clean items on that voucher, on the vouchers. I wasn't totally clear on fifty gallons of whatever for nine hundred and ninety-seven dollars. Fifty-five gallon barrel, whether that was, it looks like the invoice says five W forty, which makes me think it's motor oil. But I would be surprised we're buying motor oil from Safety Clean for crying out loud. So I just didn't have time yesterday to pursue all that, but. I had a fairly substantial voucher for Wagner Equipment. Saw that. And then, of course, tourism continues to spend money and always I raise my eyebrows about that. But it's dedicated funds, right? We've authorized them to
Right.
to expend their dollars as they see fit, so. Anyway, I got most of those questions answered and I don't know why some of those kind of came to the forefront this month that, I guess, because we haven't, they haven't been on there in the past, so.
You had more time to peruse it, that's why.
Well, well, I try to go through them every month, but when I see ten thousand dollars from tourism, I'm gonna pay attention to that, that's for sure. I'm hoping most of that was through the Office of Tourism grant dollars for the three or four counties that were involved.
I attend every one of their meetings and I will, I'm very comfortable that they're handling their money judiciously. It's expensive, but they do a lot.
I think they improved personally.
Well, I don't know what they do. They pay Vista Works a lot. I know that for a fact.
Vista Works a lot, very clear.
Okay, further discussion on the vouchers, public comment?
Did we, was there a motion on the floor? I move that we accept the vouchers as submitted.
All right, and I'll second that, sorry. Further discussion, I would just mention then for the record that the vouchers this month total five hundred and nine thousand dollars. And, no, five hundred and nine thousand, five hundred and two dollars. Five oh nine, five oh two.
No pennies?
I know, I know. She ate a pomegranate for breakfast and she's taking it out on me.
She's going, I got it.
Five hundred and nine thousand, five hundred and two dollars.
Tell her one more time.
Five oh nine, five oh two. Further discussion? Thank you. Make sure you turn your microphone back off.
Do it again, Kelly.
Got it.
Okay.
For the record. Public comment, hearing none will proceed to vote. All in favor of approving the vouchers for February, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, posnay. Motion carries.
Oh, thank you.
You're welcome. Morning, Sheriff. How are you?
I'm well, how are you?
I'm good. Let the record show, we have three visitors. I know Kelly's already done that, but. Vic, how are you, sir?
Aside from being blind, I'm.
I gotta say, how does the world look from your side?
A little fuzzy.
A little fuzzy?
Yeah.
Vic just went through some eye surgery and not just, a couple of weeks ago now, huh? Ten days?
Yeah. I finally, they let me come up to West Cliff, London. I was exiled down in Kansas City for two weeks.
And your eyeballs didn't pop out when you came over the heart scrum?
They didn't tell me about it. Actually, we didn't. We came up proper go with it. A more gradual incline and I didn't have any problems.
You know, my neighbor, obviously you know who I'm talking about, went through that and he, he also came up Oak Ridge Grade, two hours and fifteen minutes to drive up. He said he drove about ten miles an hour because the doctor had told him he needs to allow time for that
On copper go.
Gas bubble to, yeah, assimilate to the altitude. Yeah, he said it was miserable.
Jackie drove up and we drove about twenty-five miles an hour. I didn't have any.
Yeah, good.
But I have to call and talk to the gene regularly because he tells you things a surgeon doesn't.
Yeah, exactly, yeah. He'd, he'd have looked like a grouper coming out of three thousand feet of water when his eyes bolted out. Nice to have you here, sir, thank you. Appreciate you being here. Apparently I laid the vouchers up on my keyboard there when I was signing them and you wouldn't believe what it told me. Again, just trying to bring joy.
I just want to hear one more time, how much were they?
It was five oh nine, five oh two, sir.
It's gonna be hard to me to explain this to my wife why I'm missing lunch today.
Oh. Next item of business, discussion of the Community Oriented Policing Services Grant. Welcome, sir. Good morning. Bring your coffee.
We don't mind you drinking coffee while I come to you.
Hello, I love a cup of coffee. Hi, Kelly, how are you?
Good, how are you?
Oh, yes, I need to scoot up here and speak into the mic.
That's right, that's right.
Like a high chair.
COP stands for Community Oriented Policing Services.
Correct.
Or School Violence Grant, School Violence Prevention Program, sorry, okay. Or School Violence Grant, School Violence Prevention Program, sorry, okay. When this came across my computer was first I've ever heard of that, didn't even know what that stood for, so.
Yeah.
First time we've looked at it, right?
Is this the first time it's ever been?
Oh, yes, the chief gentleman.
Is this the first time it's ever been applied for?
Uh, no, so, like in nineteen ninety-six, our office of, um, Sheriff Job had applied for it, I don't know that they received it in ninety-six, but, and the only reason I knew that is because I was looking back through the history while I'm putting, so this is a very comprehensive grant. Um, I've got about fourteen hours into it right now and I'm a third of the way through it. It's.
No way.
Oh yeah, it's, it takes forever, took me six and a half hours working on it just so that I could click on the apply button.
No.
Um, so, um, yeah, because you've gotta go through, cause it's through the Department of Justice, um, and so, uh, you've gotta go through a whole bunch of different, there's about four different, um, sites that you have to have all of the organization information in and that's, you know, the county information and all that, so, um, but what the grant is, is so it's a three-year grant or it goes in three-year cycles. And it's, uh, focused on, um, providing, um, different, this specific grant is for hiring police officers to help address concerns in your community, whether it's, uh, gang violence, uh, crime in schools, school resource officers, all of that, it's, uh, uh, there's about, if I recall, three million dollars, three or four million dollars in this grant. Um, it's a highly competitive, um, grant process and grant reviews.
Full-time or what?
Yes, so what it, what it would do is it would pay, um, and you, and you can apply for, if you wanted five school resource officers, you know, because it's, it's based on communities, so if you have a school district and you have five schools, so you can apply for as, as much or as little as you want to, um, what, what I'm applying for is one full-time position. It's about sixty-three thousand dollars a year, um, working with Donna Hobby on that. It's sixty-two and some change, that's what the cost.
What issue are you addressing with it?
It's gonna be to have a full-time school resource officer, so, a- and that's not, let, let me, let me pull back, so the total cost for a brand new deputy hired on, um, you know, at seventeen dollars an hour is, the cost of the county is sixty-two thousand, six hundred and somewhat dollars, so, um, the grant only covers seventy-five percent of the cost and then, uh, then the agency that, um, requests the grant has to do a twenty-five percent match, which would come from the school. Cause the school right now is, uh, that twenty-five percent match is only fifteen thousand dollars, you know, the school's providing twenty-five thousand right now um, for off-duty work, so it would be a net gain for them of ten thousand dollars, so, um.
Then your regular deputy off-hours stuff would go away.
Correct, this would be a full-time position, um, now there are some requirements, you know, that, uh, the deputy that's on that, that's hired under that grant program has to spend at least seventy-five percent of their time in the school, which obviously, that accounts for the school year, because you're not gonna have somebody over there in the summer, so then that, and then that person would just rotate and we would use them as a patrol deputy.
You could use traffic or whatever.
Right, right, they can do stuff, yeah, so.
Can you rotate, or do you rotate guys? It, it's a position or is it dedicated to that specific person only?
You would be hiring a person.
You're hiring a person for a position.
For that one only, so he'd always be dedicated to the school.
So what we would do is, we would, we would, we would, we would take someone and, and most likely we wouldn't hire a brand-new person to go in the school, it would be someone that's working the road now would become the school resource officer, but we would send them to training so that they would become a certified school resource officer, it's a, a training that typically happens in Wyoming in the summers. Um, it's a certification process, takes two weeks, just teaches them a lot about school, school responses and stuff, and yeah, just specialty stuff. But then that, that person would be the dedicated SRO, this is too hard when you're juggling them, right? So then, this week, who does the school call?
Yeah.
If there's an issue above and beyond the regular day-to-day stuff.
So, it appears that the position is from the grant, is this a grant that you'd have to apply for every year? And if you didn't get it, oh, it's a three-year grant?
So it's a three, on a three-year cycle.
Okay, and at the end of three years, the, the person would know that their job.
Correct.
Depending on whether it's funded again.
Correct.
So does that mean they expect the community to pick it up later?
No, so you can reapply after three years and get it again.
If you don't get it.
But if you don't get it, then.
Fire it again.
Decide what you wanna do.
Right, then you have to decide as a community what you're gonna do, correct.
Good, wow.
And I mean, and then that allows us, if we could get it in there full-time, then we're gonna also be able to collect data you know, as far as the impact that that person's having, having someone there full-time, cause right now, we're, um, you know, it's not every day that they're there, so.
How big a problem is it at our school? I mean, do we really need a resource officer at the school? I, I just don't know.
Right, so, you know, it's hard for me to, it's hard for me to quantify it because I'm not there every day, but I can tell you that um, the feedback I get from the superintendent, from the principal and from the staff members over there, that there's an absolute difference in the school day-to-day depending on if there's an officer over there. Sure.
If you turn your microphone on, you may.
Let's speak up.
Pull it forward, yeah.
It sounds so nice in that microphone.
Yeah, thanks, so, uh, since Sydney's a teacher, she talks about that a lot and, um, she said that it is a huge, um, good thing over there. Because when they first started coming in, we've been doing that a couple of years, um, the kids were scared to death of them. And now they have a, um, that relationship with them, yeah, they have that relationship with them, and so they're not afraid of them and they know that they're, um, the good guys and they're not, um, they ha- have built a rapport with them. And they come into their rooms and, um, do different things with the kids and so, um, she said it's made a huge difference.
Thanks.
Yeah, it's been really good, and, and some of my deputies, when, when we did that adopted deputy program, and that was actually Mr. McFalls that brought that idea to me and then I liked it, but probably half of my deputies are like, nah, and I didn't give anybody a choice, so myself included, all of us, we all have an adopted classroom. They have our picture in the classroom and, and, uh, without exception, every deputy loves that now. They go over there, the kids just love them, I mean, they're, I mean, they're just, it's, it's been a positive impact and across the board, cause a lot of those guys, so they have their classroom, but then they go and they, they're visiting in other classrooms and stuff too. Uh, guys and gals and, uh, Deputy Janetta, she's been, um, it kinda carried over to the library and so she's been reading to kids at the library and other things too, so it's been, it's been a real positive thing.
Good PR.
Yeah, so we're hoping, you know, I'm hoping that we could, we could get this. Um, you know, you're always, you're always concerned that once you, when you have a grant to fulfill a full-time position, you know that grant is probably gonna go away at some point, whether that's three, six, nine years, it'll go away, how you pay for it, but.
So what do we have to do?
My plan is, is to work with the school, um, well, right now, it's just.
Just information.
I'm giving you that information, um, and once I get the application done, then I'll have to bring it to you for approval to sign off um, for the official, and it's due March eleventh.
Is that for next year?
So. It would start, it would, so it's.
The twenty-twenty grant, but it would.
Start at this, um.
So it would allow us to get.
Someone hired and trained before the school year starts for the twenty, twenty-one, so, you know.
For them. Next fall.
Yeah, be in school next, uh, August when school starts.
Thanks for doing this, this is, it sounds like a great.
Uh, y- yeah, it's, uh, like I said, the reason that normally that you don't do these, this grant is because they purposely, I think, make it cumbersome. It's, I, I probably have at least eighteen to twenty-four more hours to put into it right now.
And your hundred and ninety thousand dollars, they oughta ask a lot of questions.
Tell you what.
Yeah, yeah, right.
What it means though, it means that during the next couple of years, you better be bringing it up at, for thought to us because we may end up having a budget for it.
Well, and, and the school too, and that, and that's where I was gonna go to is that.
We would have to come up with a plan.
If we were to get it, I think it's incumbent that we start planning ahead with the school and saying, look, so we, we know we have this for three years, but then there's no guarantee after that, let's have a contingency plan if we don't get it renewed.
We'd have to come up with some IGA partnership with.
You know, right, what are we gonna do, so? Yeah.
School sign off on the grant too, or no?
No, they don't, but, but they are, but I do have them listed as one of the agencies that, cause you have to list like, so what all agencies are affected by, by you having this position, you know, so I put in the town of West Cliff, the, the school district, the county government and the sheriff's office, those four entities, you know, just because of funding affects all of us. The presence at the school reduces incidents at the school, which in turn, because the school's in West Cliff, you know, you try to tie as much of it together as you can.
Jim doesn't hit Silver Cliff, huh?
Not quite.
Not enough.
Almost, although with their annexation, it made pretty soon.
Um, so there's that and then just, just a heads up too, so then I'm also applying, um, for two other grants. Buy some equipment for, um, arrest control training and the other is to, uh, uh, another post grant, Colorado Post Grant for, um, uh, helping to develop our range to, to do some additions and, and we're tr- we're trying to get some flip targets in there and stuff too, so. But those are, those are all just fully refundable. So, no, it's not encumbering any cost to us.
Okay, very good, sir, well, thank you, appreciate it, thanks for coming in.
If I may, I would like to commend the sheriff on his outstanding use of our microphone system. If all of our department heads that come in and give reports would do as well as he did, this would be fantastic.
Your point is well taken and on the record, sir.
And, and the, your coasters too.
Good to see you, brother. Before we move on, can I make a comment?
That, uh, to Sheriff Byerly or in general, okay?
To the, just in public.
Okay.
First is turn on your cell phone.
Go ahead.
Okay, I, uh, gave some bad information yesterday and I wanna clarify it.
Okay.
Um, during the, um, Justice Center meeting, I said that if there was an initiative at some point on the ballot for the Justice Center, if it happened in November, they would be competing against West Cliff and Silver Cliff, I was totally incorrect, it was my error. Both Silver Cliff and West Cliff's, um, uh, tax incentive is gonna be in April, not in November.
That's right.
So I, I gave that information out incorrectly.
Good point, I, I thought they were going in November, so.
It is April.
Yeah, you're right, and I, I was in the meeting when, uh, Paul Winkie came through and said it was a special election and I forgot about it too.
My error, I apologize.
Okay, yeah.
But I did wanna clear it up.
Appreciate that, yeah, I assumed it was November and we talked about it yesterday, so.
That's good news.
Good point. Could be, yes, could be good news. Um, okay, we'll move on, a request of planning commission to consider short-term rentals, um, I don't know who would like to lead that conversation, certainly would, I guess since I put it on the agenda uh, with conversation with Ms. Jackie. Um, I know that the planning commission, Vic, has looked at this, was it November?
July first, it's in your packet that I sent in.
So, um.
Please speak into the microphone.
And use a coaster if you're drinking beverage. Hold on just a second, Jackie, I'll pull that up. And so I think we talked, uh, at our meeting in Wettmore about having a conversation to see if we wanna ask the planning commission to relook at this. I believe I'm pulling up your documentation you sent us.
Yes.
It's got a cover letter on it, you got it?
Uh, appreciated your office's research, uh, you know, initially we had always talked, there was probably seventy-five or eighty properties. Um, but it was interesting that that number came down around forty-some, huh?
But remember, they take their VRBOs off in the wintertime, a lot of people do.
Okay.
And remember that it's short-term rentals, but, uh, there's two things that, um, I, I can answer your questions and we can start with, what do you expect a short-term rental to do? Through our zoning regs, do you expect, cause in our last meeting on July first with the planning commission, we discussed short-term rentals and the short-term rental thing was we were not going to do anything until the legislation came up with something. But we could also do something with their septic systems because they were advertising eight people and they only had a four-person septic.
Right, you worry about septic.
So, we could go to that standpoint for health, I guess my question is, is, uh, if you have a short-term rental, you go through a VRBO and they collect the pillow tax and in turn, the pillow tax goes to the tourism and they're getting three times more money than they've ever gotten, um, and I don't know if that's attributed to how much pillow tax is coming in or what, so if you're gonna mess with the short-time rentals, do you want them to apply for a special use permit? Are you treating it like a business? Because that's, I, we can get them for health through the septics and all we do is send them a letter saying, hey, your structure size for a two-bedroom septic and you're advertising for more people than your septic was designed to have. But the other thing is, we don't have, as Mr. Flower had brought in in the last meeting, we don't have commercial areas. So if you're gonna run a commercial business and if you think short-term rentals is a business, then they would have to apply for a special use permit and the cost of that is five hundred dollars.
Okay.
Let me ask a quick one, um, Jackie, has, has the planning commission, have, have you talked to the, the board at all about it?
Yes, July, July first is a meeting and I quoted what the conclusion was.
But at the nineteenth, we asked you to come in and discuss the short-term rental, what were, what were you expecting out of this meeting? Were you expecting us to make a decision or were you gonna go back and have some recommendations?
No, you have to make a decision, uh, you have to do a verbal decision in your commissioners' meeting whether you want the planning commission to look at it and it has to be on record on short-term rental and then we go back and we say, the commissioners, uh, directed us to look into this. Okay, cause we're already looking, amending other things like camping and stuff like that.
That's why.
So we need some direction, but, um, I guess I'm going off of the July first meeting where we already went through it and we actually had people show up. And at that time, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, but the town of West Cliff had already done a document and they were going to their planning commission and the planning commission said no, in the town of West Cliff. So the short-term rentals, that document that you, uh, they had done, didn't get approved, is what Mike Carter had said last week.
Okay, thank you.
It just.
Comments, gentlemen?
That, on that issue, did, so that means that bed and breakfast that are in West Cliff, were they grandfathered?
No, they're not messing with the short-term rentals.
They're not?
No.
But B and Bs in the county are all SUPs.
Yes, bed and breakfasts are, okay, a short-term rental, as it's clarified through the state, my understanding is a short-term rental to be classified as that, you cannot have someone like, uh, serve you breakfast, take your money like a motel hotel and that's what a short-term rental is.
Only for three months.
Uh-huh, now, um, when you look through my list.
Before you go on though, Jackie, so part of the definition on short-term rentals is also uh, thirty days or less, correct?
Correct. Also, um, with a short-term rental, let's say that I have a short-term rental, I own a house in Custer County and I rent it out for short-term rental, I can stay there thirty days and it doesn't have to be consecutive and I, by the law, by JD, uh, told me this, you cannot charge them commercial property tax. So how would you, how would you police something like that? If I come in and I tell JD, no, I'm staying two weeks at Christmas, a week during the Fourth of July, no one's gonna, we're not capable of policing. Fourth of July, no one's going to, we're not capable of policing it, and we're not going to call you a liar. So you're not going to get commercial property tax off this.
Okay, uh, I take exception to one of your statements, but I'm...
Which one?
Uh, that we cannot police it. I don't believe that's accurate. I think we can, uh, if we so choose to.
Forty of them?
There's no statutes saying we can enforce.
Oh, I, I don't know how you would police it. Let's put it that way. I'm, didn't mean cannot.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so one of the, uh, gentlemen, I already had an issue with, um, back in two thousand and ten. So back in two thousand and ten, um, I contacted the gentleman, because I was concerned that he was advertising his location for a large amount of bedrooms. This is a letter from the lawyer. But it was way back in two thousand and ten, um, commenting on how it was. At that time, our lawyers said, don't pursue it.
Two thousand and ten?
Yes.
Ten years ago, okay. I want to make sure I had your date right, sorry.
So if you want to look at the planning and zoning regs, I also enclosed them in your packet, um, that would, I felt, fit the situation that we're in.
All right, I want to re-ask the question I asked him. You, you talked to the planning commission guys before you came here today. Did you get a, I don't want to send them on a wild goose chase if they've already made their mind up on, on the issue.
We had a workshop.
Right.
Already about this July first.
That was July first.
Um, Mr. Flower was in attendance, and I had some other people that were in short-term rentals. So I guess the first thing we got to do is, our zoning regs state that we are zoned for one, single-family dwelling and agricultural plus outbuildings. Okay, so we don't have commercial areas in Custer County. So it's basically like, uh, Bossy, who does tractor repair. He has an SUP. We have them all over, you know, spotted all over the unincorporated part of the county. So our first, I would believe that the first thing that the commissioners have got to decide is, is this a commercial business? Because if it is a commercial business, then they need to apply for a special use permit.
Okay, go ahead, sir.
I'm torn. I'm torn because my first reaction is, how dare we tell anybody what they could do with their house? However, the other side of me says, I don't want septic systems overflowing, because it's exceeding the limits that they have. So I think we need to have some sort of overseeing of short-term rentals, just to make sure that that safety issue, that they're meeting the state code. That's what I'm really concerned about.
So aren't you enforcing that now, or are you? Or how do you know?
No, only if they advertise, and that's what it took all day long, is to do the research. Okay, another question...
Hold on just a second. Go ahead, Commissioner Prince, I don't believe you were finished.
I wasn't. Thank you, sir. I would really prefer, rather you come to us. I mean, I will, I'm going to move in a minute, or someone will move, I think, maybe, to ask the commission to look at it again, under the guidelines of the safety and meeting state code. That would be my suggestion. And then I would like you to come back to us and say, well, if they lease it out for, I don't know, I'm making this up now, thirty days or less a year, they're not a commercial business, but if they go to thirty-one days or more a year, then they are a business. And that's a decision that I think your, or your group should come back to us and say, you're the experts, why not? We recommend this, this, and this, or we recommend nothing. And then we can determine whether we feel that's acceptable and approve it or not. But I'm not sure, I feel comfortable telling your committee, excuse me, your group...
The board.
The board.
Commission.
Thank you. Commission. You guys, I don't feel comfortable telling you guys what I want you to come back and tell me. I'd rather you say, we have this concern. The concern is safety, meeting state code. That's a concern we have. That would be my feeling, and I would say, I, I would like your committee to determine if, if that's something we need to be concerned about, or what you want us to do about it.
Okay.
Okay. Comments? Go ahead.
Can I say something? Okay, so the planning commission is set up to look through the zoning regs only. They do not do septics. That's a whole nother ballgame. So the safety issues would be the building. We do not have a building code.
I don't want to go there.
So this is what concerns me.
Well, it's the health issues, what he's working on.
Uh-huh, but they don't do that. Planning commission does.
Go ahead, finish your statement, man.
Okay, this is what concerns me. I go to Fremont County. I'm running a VRBO. I bring all my family there, and we all get out on the deck. Okay, or I go to sleep, and these homes don't have the carbon monoxide detectors that the state requires. That's my concern with the safety issues. The health issue is the septics. Okay, when you are advertising for more people than your septic would allow, but I know you don't want to say, but you actually have to direct the planning commission to look at it and stuff, so I don't know. I guess my question is, is how many times do we have to look at it?
Well...
Because we've already looked at it. When we were directed back in July, we had a workshop, and that's where you see the minutes that are included in the packet. So are we just going to keep revisiting it until we get something that we like?
So let me ask a question.
Go ahead, sir.
Thank you. If you know that there is a short-term rental, are you, and you determine what is commercial and what is not, and how many people are there, and how many are not, and what the, what the septic system's capability for handling is, that's important to me. The second thing is, when I'm talking about safety, I'm not talking about building codes. I know if they get twenty-five people on the deck, and it falls down, and they all get hurt, maybe a building code could have saved it, maybe not. I don't have any idea of an assigned issue we were going to. But if it's a commercial building, then if, if you did something like I'm talking about, maybe less than this many days, that many days becomes commercial, not commercial, a decision that you make. But if it is commercial, then you have a right to ask an inspector, a fire marshal, someone to go in and say, how many fire extinguishers do you have? Do you have proper ingress and egress in case of a disaster? That's all I'm concerned about. I'm just concerned if we're going to make a commercial, if it's going to be a commercial enterprise, and if you're gaining money at someone else, you're selling a service, it's a, it's a commercial building. But if you do it once or twice a month, like you said, Christmas and New Year, maybe that's not, that's your decision, I'm pointing you for your committee. But if you determine what is commercial, once it's commercial, then not only can we inspect the septic and make sure that they're covered there, but we can send in an official to make sure that, you know, there's no gas leaks, and there's fire extinguishers, and the stuff that I worry about in case of a disaster.
Kenda?
Yeah, real quick, Jackie, and, and that, you're right on, Jay. You looked at it, there was a conclusion, and the conclusion was, the short-term rental owners will be notified of their violation of their septic system, basically. And then you stated further that, and I'm positive this is not all of them, you got the ones that you outlined, and you said, uh, the zoning novice can contact the short-term rentals and let them know they're in the violation. So that's a recommendation, or is that an action? Are you guys going to do that? Is that what you're proposing to us?
No, that's an action.
Okay, so that's what you're doing?
That's why I showed you that I had done this back in two thousand and ten, and that, um, and I don't care, we can go to court.
So I'm not asking you to look at, I don't think that's what we're wanting. To me, it's, you looked at it. I think the issue initially came up, because we were concerned about it being commercial property or not, and whether we're ta, collecting the right taxes or not. That was really the big deal. And it sounds like the state says, you know, if it's short-term, and, and is it short-term to one person only, or is it, uh, multiple persons can have thirty days each?
No, the owner of the house...
The owner can only rent it thirty...
No, the owner can stay in the house thirty days in one year, and they don't have to be consecutive.
Okay.
And not be charged commercial property tax.
So then the, everybody else can stay in it the rest of the time for eleven months?
Correct.
Okay, that makes more sense. So, so that, so what is, what do we want, who are we going to ask to do what is the question? And, and so, uh, like she says, it's not a zoning issue, I don't think.
It can be two issues here. If you want, okay, so here's my other issue. If you're going after short-term rentals, then what's the diff between a long-term rental?
Okay, I've reserved some comments here. I would appreciate an opportunity to speak to this. If I have a question, I will ask that directly to you. So my comments are this. Number one, I believe it is a zoning issue. If we have businesses located in our county, they need to be zoned accordingly, in my opinion. I'm not going after anybody. I want to make sure that if there are businesses being operated in our county, that they're doing it within the regulations that are set forth in the zoning, uh, or the rules set forth in the zoning regulations. If those regulations or rules aren't in the zoning regulations, then I would be interested in moving forward in that area. So my concern is zoning, septic, and water. I understand the county has very little, if nothing, to do with the water laws and enforcing them, but just because we're not in charge of enforcing them, it doesn't mean it's not a consideration and a concern of mine. If, these are questions I would like to have answered at some point. Does a well have to be certified as a commercial well? Or can a commercial business or a business run on a well without it being? So I think that is something that we need to, uh, define. My biggest concern, unlike Commissioner Prince has indicated, my biggest concern is, are we having businesses in our county operating under the zoning regulations like they're supposed to be? My second concern, of course, is the health aspect from septic. So I would ask you, Jackie, do, do water wells, are they permitted, commercial or residential? Do you know the answer to that?
Both.
So if I want to run a commercial business, can I do that on a residential well?
No.
Okay. So my other point is, that I really think this is going to come down to the definition of what we consider a business or a commercial venture. I, I would think that, number one, the tourism industry or tourism board would be all over the short-term rental thing, because that's how they are funded, through the lodging tax. And I know some of the tourism board members personally own short-term rentals, uh, and I'm very confident that they report that, and, and that the state is collecting that tax. So, uh, I appreciate the documentation that you have provided. I think on the extreme scale of this, we have a short-term rental that advertises sleeping fifty people. If they have a septic that's engineered to handle fifty people, then I'm not worried about the septic. If they're sleeping fifty people as a business, and they're not zoned properly, then I'm very concerned about that. One other question, and then I will end. I know that septics are designed based on the number of bedrooms of a residence. Is there a set number of people that each bedroom represents?
Yes.
Two people?
Yes.
So if we see a, an advertised short-term rental that sleeps eight, then we're going to assume it better have four bedrooms, or they're not in compliance. Is that a fair statement?
Yes.
Thank you.
My turn?
Yes, you may.
Okay, let's go from this aspect. That's what a business is. Anything that collects commerce, commerce is business. Okay, so Custer County, we'll go back to the zoning regs. In Custer County, you have to apply and get approved for a special use permit. I copied those pages out of the zoning regs for you. So, um, we can start with the first page, page that I copied for you.
Before you do that, look, because I want to follow up with, with what he said, which is related to that. Are any of these businesses or not?
Yes.
They are?
Yes. By that definition, they are businesses.
To be clear now, this is an internet definition, this is not a planning and zoning regulation definition?
No, that's where I'm going to go now.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so on page nine of our zoning, it is your uses by right and special uses. So we're going to go back to your use by right. Your use by right, and then we got to keep in mind, um, and I'm going to present, I presented the other impact, now I'm going to present the zoning impact. Your, uh, we're a county that is zoned as a land-use county. We don't give building permits, we give zoning permits. We're zoned for less density. It was set up in seventy-two. Okay, so our use by right is one, single-family dwelling and that. Okay, you cannot rent a bunkhouse in, under our zoning regulations.
Can I interrupt for clarification?
Yes.
So when you say you cannot rent a bunkhouse, do you mean that literally, or do you mean you cannot rent an accessory structure of any kind on a piece of property?
Bunkhouse is the accessory, accessory structure is a shed, so you cannot live in a shed.
Second home or a home.
Uh-huh, so it's either clarified as bunkhouse, and you got to have a permanent dwelling before you're allowed to have a bunkhouse. Okay, so in our zoning, and I copied that, you cannot rent or lease a bunkhouse. So even if I had a home, and I was renting my bunkhouse for a VRBO, there's one thing that you cannot do, so you're already in violation. The second thing is, is that any time you run a commercial activity, and if, and we're going to go with, this is a commercial activity, then you have to apply for a special use permit. That way, all your neighbors get to weigh in also. Because in the last short time, I've had three or four people come into the office, and I'm talking in the last two weeks, complaining about the VRBO that's next to their home.
You mean short-term rental?
Sorry, short-term rental. Okay.
So Jackie, on that same point. A bunkhouse can be rented if they get a special use permit?
No.
Or for the...
No. Now here's where the water kicks in. You cannot have a bunkhouse on any property that's less than thirty-five acres, because your well does not support that. You have to have a thirty-five-acre well or greater in order to support a bunkhouse.
So unless it's thirty-five acres, it's a non-exempt well, is that correct?
Unless it's thirty-five acres, you cannot have a bunkhouse, because you only get a residential well.
If you augmented it, you can't?
No. Because our zoning regs say no. So if you look on page fifty that I sent you, cannot be separately rented, lent, or leased.
The bunkhouse.
The bunkhouse. Okay, so then I looked through all the short-term rentals, and I found one that, um, was allowed a second home. He had gone through the process with the BZA, but it specifically said, you cannot rent or lease this house.
Can I ask you a quick question? Can I ask you a quick question? I know I'm interrupting you, but I just need this clarification, or I'm gonna be all over the map. Is there, in the zoning resolution, is there, I thought there was a section of definitions?
Yes, there is.
Okay, that's what I've been looking for.
Okay, go farther back.
Clear in the back.
It's in the back.
No, it's not in the back, it's in the front.
I'm looking for the.
The back of the, the, the gen- or the?
No, it's, he's gotta just flip some more pages.
Well, I know, I was trying to get to the table of content, so I wouldn't have to flip pages, but nonetheless. Keep going forward, I think. And I know I'm interrupting you, and I apologize for that, but my, the reason I'm asking this is the definition of a bunkhouse. That's, if we don't have that defined, then none of this is gonna make any sense.
Oh, if you wanna know the definition of a bunkhouse, then go to page fifty.
I'm on page fifty, yes.
Okay, then look at bunkhouse.
Okay.
Guest house, bunkhouse, at the top of the page. Three F is the definition of cannot be separately rented, let or leased.
So I could build a garage according to this and have somebody live in that, if I meet these rules?
No. You cannot live in any structure that is not permitted correctly. So if I have a garage and I put a loft on the top, then my loft would have to be considered a bunkhouse. You have two separate permits.
Can you say that one more time, please?
I build a garage. On the top of it, I have a loft that I rent out.
Happens a lot in this county, I believe, yep.
You're out of compliance because you gotta permit your garage and you gotta permit the loft. They're two separate permits.
But you can permit that.
Could be done.
Could be done.
Okay. So I wanna read the definition of a bunkhouse. Uh, "A detached living quarters of a permanent type of construction without cooking facilities, clearly subordinate and incidental to the main dwelling on the same lot or parcel." So, yeah, I'm just gonna throw this out hypothetically. If there is a landowner that has finished out the second story of a barn or a garage, and are, is renting that out, unless they have already gone through the permitting process, they're out of compliance.
Correct.
Whether it's zoning or not, doesn't have anything to do with it. It's out of compliance with the.
Resolution.
With the resolution.
Correct. Okay, but let's take, um, let's take another example. Um, I'm a rancher, and we have two VR, oh, short-term rentals.
Thank you.
That are, um, pre-zoning.
Yes.
So, they're fine, if they meet the septic.
Right, and I think your point is well-taken. We haven't said that at all in these proceedings, either last meeting or this, that if it is pre-zoning, then none of these rules really apply.
Except the state.
Except for the state, and you've indicated that on some of your examples. Septic primarily, yeah. Could be water, but that's not our concern. I mean, it's a concern, it's not our purview.
Correct. It's not our lane.
So I wanna, if you don't mind, ask, go ahead, sir. Oh, okay, I was gonna ask, uh, Chairman of the Planning Commission for your comments. Um, I know that we have already talked about this. Jackie's made that very clear. I say that has no relevance on this conversation, what we've done in the past. And I'm not opposed to asking the Planning Commission to reconsider it again.
Yeah, and I think we'd be glad to do that. I think the main thing to keep in mind here, and I understand the water issues, I understand the health issues, but we have this zoning resolution, and I'm repeating, some of what's been said here, that there are two uses by right. One is residence and one is agriculture.
Right.
And if, and any other activity that goes on in the county has to have a special use permit. It's, it's pretty clear that what it says there, and so, um, I think we need to, we need to make a decision on these VRBOs.
Or short-term rentals.
Yes.
Yeah, stop it. He meant, he meant short-term rentals.
We know what you meant. There's, uh, Airbnb and.
Right, there's eight or nine different names.
And I think some of those, if not all of them, Jackie, don't they have an umbrella organization? It's a tourist organization if they pay dues to it?
Yeah, I think, uh, you belong to VRBO that, and you sign up with VRBO. They make sure that your pillow tax is paid, and that, I think there's some kinda liability too that they cover.
But that tells me they're a commercial operation.
Let me ask you a question, speaking. Uh, se- seems to me they are a business. Do you think they're a business?
Yeah, I, I don't.
By our definition, by the zoning?
Because they're not agriculture.
There's only three choices, right? Ag, residential, commercial.
And then, if you, if you wanted to, since I addressed this earlier, we've, I don't know how many, uh, special use permits we've given for a bed and breakfast out in, in the county, but there's not much difference between a bed and breakfast and a, and a, and a rep.
Well, did you classify that as a business then?
Yes.
That special use permit turned it into a commercial property?
I guess I'm concerned about precedent. We've got, if we're gonna adhere to our, our zoning resolution, I think we have to bite the bullet to say, these are businesses and they need to have a special use.
Succinctly put, in my opinion, sir, that's been my concern all along. If we're gonna have zoning resolutions.
Follow them.
Right?
Yes.
Then the expectation would be that everybody follows those. I don't think we'd be having this long-drawn conversation if, for example, a slaughterhouse wanted to open a business in this county. There would be no question about that, correct? You will get an SUP or you will not function. I get frustrated because I don't see any difference between that and a short-term rental. I believe those are businesses.
Okay, so, by our zoning resolution, as the Chairman of the Planning Commission said, they all need special use permits.
Okay.
So we can start enforcing that ASAP.
It's your definition, it's our definition.
And when we do that, the Planning Commission has the right to put conditions on it. And all the neighbors are notified, and they have the right to weigh in. But they also set conditions on it stating, uh, where's your trash go? Um, what, how much, you can only have eight people here because you only have that big a septic and stuff, so it would probably be the best way to go.
Okay. Yeah, I've got, and I'm gonna hear about it, I can guarantee you. I've got personal friends that have short-term rentals. I am not opposed to short-term rentals. I don't believe any of us are, but I will only speak for myself. I am opposed to commercial or businesses running in this county outside of a zoning resolution. That is it.
Well, they're running outside the zoning resolution.
Yes. So, which leads us to a great question. I'm sure you'll have this conversation in a Planning Commission meeting, if that's the direction the commission, the county commissioners go, is gonna become enforcement. Uh, I personally, on the surface, believe that's a zoning office responsibility. Whether that requires another FTE or not, I have no idea about that, but. No, we're gonna do that later.
I mean, full-time employee.
You can look that up on the internet. Yes.
I, I think that's a good point because we're, Jackie, we're now at fifty?
Forty.
Well, Jackie told me fifty yesterday.
I, 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 well, no, I think that we are around fifty because you take them off the, um, website when it's winter.
So, so that brings up a question I have to ask.
So, and I don't think there's any question that we're gonna have more of these.
Right.
And, and that's gonna put more demand on services from the county. Jackie's gonna have to do septic inspections. She's gonna have to make sure they comply with what they're doing. And so, I think at some point in time, and maybe some new special conditions, we're gonna have to take a look at somehow getting her some help or to monitor it, because we've got, we've got special use, um, permits going out now. I don't know how many, aside from, well, they aren't special use permits, these short-term rentals. I don't know how many special use permits we've got outside, but I don't think you have time to go and, and visit those on, on a regular basis and make sure they're compliant. And I, I get complaints from people that say that somebody's, for example, somebody's conducting a wedding and it's not on their, on their special use permit. So I think we need a little bit more effort and monitoring, and Jackie needs more help longer.
Uh, Commissioner Kanda, uh, I know Commissioner Kanda asked to say something.
I apologize, I didn't know that.
Yeah, I know you didn't, that's why I asked.
Right, so it just boils down to what we're asking them to do, because I agree. And it sounds like we're all in agreement. We have zoning regulations, and we have septic requirements and issues. And it boils down to how do we enforce it. But that's what we, we need to, we need to lay it on the line. I think we all agree, a business is, is a business. And if there's some other thing that you're gonna discuss, you know, what the recommendation does, needs to be, or here's, here's what we've seen, here's what has to happen. We'll deal with whether Jackie has the time or not to do it, or whether it requires another person, or, or the zoning. Uh, I, I don't, from what I'm hearing, maybe the, the requirement still is to take a look at zoning, make sure we're, we're incorporating everything correctly and interpreting it right. Because you don't want to enforce something that somebody, a lawyer will come back and say, you didn't really have that in the zoning. Really, you meant this, uh, those kinds of things. So, we, we are, uh, I think in agreement with that. Jay, what else, what else can, what, you, have you got a re- a proposed?
Well, the only thing I would just suggest that you look at when you're looking at this, and I'm thinking of Montegro, New Orleans, and I'm sorry, I know it's totally irrespective of this, but it was, when I lived there, it was very common for people during Montegro to leave town, rent their house out for that week or ten days of Montegro.
And that was all?
One time a year. Is that a commercial venture? I don't know, and that's the kinda question I wanna ask. There may be some exceptions to it. I mean.
You gotta look at the whole picture.
These are just South Dakota's famous for the same.
Exactly, exactly. So, just a thought.
Right. So I don't know how to word that. I, I don't have to make the motion, but if no one else wants to, I certainly will, because I.
Right, do, well, maybe. It, it, do we need a motion? They have a, they have a job to do. They have zoning rules. Do we, we, no, no, we need, but how? See, what, give me some words.
Okay, you ready?
Yeah. Can I make a comment first?
You may.
It's already in our zoning. We just have to enforce it.
Okay, to response to that, obviously, I know you and I both looked at the short-term rental regulations of Gunnison County. It is not in our zoning resolution.
Yes, it is.
There are definitions set up in here.
No.
No, that's what I'm saying.
It says any commercial business has to have an SUP. That covers everything.
We're trying to address short-term rentals, right?
You need to put that in your definitions, is the point.
I mean, that's, I guess that's up to the Planning Commission, but every, not every county, but almost every county in the state of Colorado is fighting this. They're, they're fighting this battle of trying to decide what those regulations are gonna be. They already had zoning regulations in place, I'm sure, but not to deal with short-term rentals specifically. I don't, I don't think this document will hold up in court.
You need to have short-term rental and have it defined as to exactly what you're talking about. And, and declare it to be a commercial enterprise.
I've got it in my file. I think Gunnison's short-term rental
keep wanting to call it regulations, I think it's thirty-six.
Some pages long.
And that definition would include the timelines, you know, is it one week, or is it a month, or is it?
For instance, thirty days is anything beyond that here.
You have to specify. That definition's already been.
Yeah, I'm not sure it's in state statute. I don't know why my microphone keeps going in and out, but. I just, I just don't, personally, as a commissioner, I just don't want the Planning Commission to say, we've got our bases covered in this. I don't believe you do. That's why I'm prepared to make a motion to ask you to consider amending the resolutions.
Yes, sir.
We already have, uh, Jackie, I think it's talking to you, or at least she's talking to me. There's some other things that you want and changes in the zoning resolution, so I think we need to do that, and we just need to pay attention.
So that would be the motion. It would, it would be to, uh, mon-.
Go make your motion.
The commission can on their own decide to reconsider amending these resolutions. You don't have to have a motion from the chair, or from the commission, but. The only way the county commissioners can indicate their desire for you to function is to ask you to do that, right, on some specific thing. I can't, as a single person, just come and say, hey, Vic, I want you guys to go look at this. Needs to be more formal than that. You, as a commission, could do it on your own if you wanted to, and then bring your recommendations to the Board of County Commissioners, correct?
But it would, it would be helpful, I think, if the VOTC requested that we, we do this.
And keep it broad enough so it gives you the latitude to do it, is, is, you know. We don't wanna restrict it with a motion that is too.
What's the group's pleasure?
I'd like to hear your motion.
Yep.
Mine? Yeah. Oh, I would move that the Planning Commission, uh, consider amending their zoning resolutions pertaining to short-term rentals in Custer County.
I'll second it.
We moved and seconded to, uh, request the Planning Commission consider amending their zoning resolutions pertaining to short-term rentals for the discussion. Yes, sir.
Is that, is that, do, should we be more specific in what we're asking? Or is that, do you understand what it is that we're asking?
Yeah, I don't know if they understand, but that's why I kept it.
Yeah, and it needs to be generic, in my view, because they need to have some latitude, just like we were talking about timelines and all of that and those things. We, we don't need to spec out.
I think they got the message.
Gunnison County?
It's one summit, West Cliff Summit.
Yeah, now, and I'd like to just.
West Cliff was written very well, by the way.
I know, the gentleman that authored.
And I'd like to make a comment about that, with all respect, because we're talking about the unincorporated portions of Custer County. Does that include the unincorporated portions of the two municipalities?
Well, they're not.
It's not, they aren't.
They're towns, they're.
They're municipalities.
Municipality with the borders, and we don't have rights to.
Because I just read a document yesterday that had to deal with the unincorporated portions of the two towns. I wasn't sure exactly what that meant, but.
That doesn't make any sense.
Unless it's a federal piece of ground in the middle.
And I'm gonna ask this question. In your opinion, I'll ask it to Jay. Is this scenario the same for the towns as it is for the county?
And I don't really know, I'm not sure I can answer that. Obviously, the dynamics of the towns are very different from the dynamics of the county. Um, what I work with on West Cliff was for specific town.
Right.
Um, whether it would carry over and be sufficient for the county also, that's a question.
Well, there, there would be different from a septic point of view.
Well, for several points of view.
There's many points.
So there, it's different.
City water, city sanitation.
And the reason I ask that, unless I totally misunderstand the whole situation, is the towns aren't zoned for residential or agriculture, so they have to be dealt with differently, correct? I mean, you can have a business in the town.
No. Because right now Silver Cliff is taking this to their Planning Commission because they have two VRBOs that is sitting in an R3, and that's not zoned right.
Okay, so the towns operate on zoning as well?
On our zoning or theirs?
No, theirs.
That's right.
Yeah, so.
Well, I just, I just don't. I wouldn't expect just to throw a blanket thing over this and say, because the towns have done this, this is what the county's gonna do. I just think we're on a different situation. That's all I'm, that's the only point I'm trying to make.
I think for purposes of your motion, it's sufficient, they got their marching orders, and they understand what you're looking at.
But, and don't come back with just, we looked at it. It's, here's what we've done, here's what we gotta do, here's what we recommend.
Yeah, we got a lot.
So main motion, the rules do require we have time of debate, so that's why I was asking. Any further discussion? Public comment? You see the vote? Yeah, go ahead.
Well, the only thing I would, Jackie, you wanna do other things for the zoning resolution, right?
Yes.
Would it be, I would ask, would it be wise to have the motion say, rather than, look like we're specifically zeroing in on, on short-term rentals, say, just ask us to revise, amend the zoning resolution to include, and then Jackie could incorporate the other thing, this, this, and this. ask us to revise, amend the zoning resolution to include, and then Jackie could incorporate the other thing, this, this, and this, rather than just specifically zooming in on short-term rentals, that's just a suggestion, we would probably do that regardless.
Yeah, I think, I mean, you already got your other list of things you want to look at. This is just making sure this is added to it, I don't see if she has to list everything.
And you don't have to, you can present it differently, you know, different times.
Yeah, I understand what you're saying, I don't have a problem with this being a standalone motion, I don't know what else was on the docket for the planning commission, can you?
You guys had a motion to that. A month ago or so to, when Jackie said there were some things that needed to be done, you guys, I'm pretty sure you put that in.
I just don't remember what the, that's why.
Camping. Cease and desist.
Probably, you know, she makes a good point, we may have already asked them to do exactly this.
No, not short-term rentals.
I thought you said short, what? I thought it was to include them, okay. I know that was the bigger picture.
Yeah. Further discussion, go ahead.
So March second, Monday, this coming Monday, is our meeting with the planning commission and the border zoning adjustment at the West Cliff Town Hall. The border, please come in the back door.
Oh, because they're closed on Mondays?
We won't go there till Wednesday. Okay.
Say that again, I missed it.
So Monday at one thirty.
She's moving the planning commission and B Z A meeting to West Cliff Town Hall instead of the courthouse.
So the B Z A will be real short, they just have elections and housekeeping. The planning commission is going to set the calendar for the workshops. They might just set one day, and then after that one, set another day, or they might set a couple in a row. After that, you will get fair warning.
You're talking this Monday?
Monday, yeah, I have a question for you then, too, meant to ask this earlier, and it got by me. As a sanitarium for the. Sanitarium, did I say um, sanitarian for the county, is it your job to deal with septics? Or as a zoning officer, is it your job to deal with septics?
It is my job as a sanitarian to deal with septics.
Thank you.
She's an O W Ots.
That's through public health, exactly.
So anytime we talk about septics or health or anything, you must get out of the B O C C meeting and reconvene into public health. So I can't talk about them.
Thank you, I appreciate that. Further discussion? Hearing none, we'll proceed to vote, all in favor of requesting the planning commission to considers amending their zoning regulations.
Resolutions pertaining to short-term rentals, say aye.
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 Post nay? Motion carries.
I don't know why, Ms. Kara, I just keep cutting in and out, I don't know what's going on, but.
Maybe bouncing off of this topic.
We will be hearing, we'll be hearing about it from viewers that they can't hear or understand us. Okay, ma'am, anything else? As I get to my, back to my agenda.
You stay.
Okay.
Just a second, because I'm about five. Doc, not enough. I can answer that in two words, not enough.
And did I get a chance to shake your hand when you came out?
No, you can shake hands.
I don't want to, it spreads.
Because of coronavirus, right?
I'm not going to be shaking hands.
You were carrying.
All right, next item of business, consideration of request to file a lawsuit concerning a zoning violation. Turn the floor over to both of you, I'm assuming we're not going to talk about names specifically.
No.
If we are, then we can know that.
Now, I, Jackie has another case where it's a husband and wife that own the property, but almost a year ago, April of twenty nineteen, he signed, and he signed himself, so he's the only one that I can go after on the note, but he signed a promissory note to pay one thousand seven hundred eighty-seven dollars and twenty cents in four monthly installments.
One more time on the amount, sir?
One thousand seven hundred eighty-seven and twenty cents.
Okay, thank you.
And he has not paid anything since then, despite repeated requests from Jackie.
No, he's not paid anything, because I thought you said.
Well, he had paid two hundred before he signed the note.
Oh, that was before he signed the note, okay.
What was the date of that note?
April twenty-four nineteen, twenty nineteen.
And the note was to cover what, a septic system?
What's its.
An accessory building.
He built it without.
The zoning permit for an accessory structure, right?
Yes.
My move, we authorize.
Well, no, I just, well, because I did want to say that this is the kind of case I can file in county court, I don't have to go to district court for that. I actually prepared the paperwork, it's just collection on a promissory note. I got, I got so carried away with it, I actually went ahead and e-filed it last Tuesday without your permission, so at this point, I'm hoping you will ratify.
I move that we don't ratify.
Let's hang them.
Well, and.
He dig into his own pocket.
There is no filing fee since this was filed for the county, and when I took the summons and complaint over to the sheriff's office to Paula, she said, there's no, they're not going to charge for service of process, so there are no costs.
My move, we ratify the action that our attorney took to collect the outstanding debt on a promissory note, signed twenty-four April.
Okay, now, we're not collecting this debt, we're filing a lawsuit.
Filing the lawsuit is what I, to act on that debt.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to ratify the action of council filing. A.
County court complaint.
County court complaint with the county court.
Yes.
Second.
He did second.
You did second, sorry, okay, give me just a second, gentlemen.
We can't have court in here?
It's got to go to court, real court, with a judge.
With a real judge, Jackie.
We did it here before. We've had court in here.
Well, we have had on some other issues, they come in and they cry, and everybody gives in to them.
I never have heard you cry.
What's your question?
Rules of, of pay concerning ratify. Okay. It's our discussion, further discussion, since we've already discussed it, guess it would be further discussion. Hearing none, or public comment? Hearing none, we'll proceed to vote on ratifying the action of our attorney filing. I just want to get the words right, I'm sorry.
It's a county court complaint.
County court complaint in county court. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, post nay? Motion carries. It's been ratified, sir.
All right, and just a couple of other things, it's, the summons return date is March twenty-four at ten a.m. And, as I said, I'm just suing the husband, because he's the only one that signed the promissory note. But there's, I have a couple of other things, oh, and the case number is twenty C fourteen. The twenty being.
In county court.
In county court, twenty C, the C stands for civil, and the fourteen means it's the fourteenth case filed this year. But the other thing I wanted to ask, on the, the complaint, I, there's a place where you can ask for attorney's fees, I did ask for attorney's fees, but I probably won't get those, because the promissory note did not specifically say that if planning and zoning had to take him to court, or the county commissioners had to take him to court, that you would be entitled to an award of attorney's fees. I'm just bringing that up, because I think that's something I would like you to consider, that. And your promissory note actually should have a definite date, pay-by date, you just said pay in four months, four hundred dollars, but didn't really say when it was going to start and when it was going to end, so I can give you maybe a little more thorough promissory note to use if you're going to do this.
I would really like you to do that.
Okay, well, I will do that, but I also will include some language about attorney's fees.
I like you doing that stuff for me.
I just wanted to.
Do you like doing it?
Oh, I, this is getting a little personal.
Okay.
All right, so that's, I just wanted to bring that up.
Before we move on, while you're still here, with all respect, I have to ask this question, does the county have any business writing promissory notes?
I think it's, I mean, they're coming in and they're promising, they're giving verbal promises, by getting a promissory note, it gives us the mechanism to, otherwise, if I didn't have that note, I'd have to be filing in district court, it would be a whole lot more complicated. So by having the note that they acknowledge they owe that amount, I think it simplifies it. I'd like to see that more frequently in these cases where they acknowledge they owe, and they're going to come in and pay, and you just keep getting promises. It's like the one that you authorized me to file last week, he doesn't pay. That one has to go to district court, but if there was actually just suing on a note, it would be a lot simpler to do it.
So, dealing with promissory notes, is that a banking function?
No, no, it's just a, it's a contract between the county and the property owner.
Or between me and you.
Yeah, and that's, that's something, it's very routine, we can certainly do that.
What it does, in my opinion, it puts the teeth into the promise that you made, that if you don't comply, I have a piece of paper that I can enforce if I need to, as we're doing today, that's the way I look at promissory notes.
Okay, the alternative to that is them to pay when they get a permit, correct?
Well, then there's never an issue.
That's my point, that's my point.
They build it without even asking, so you couldn't get to that point.
You build the structure, and you don't get a permit.
Right.
So the alternative would be, we go out there and you tear the structure down, or else you sign a promissory note, and you get charged three times the amount.
Or.
You have to tear the building down.
Or you pay the permit when you come in to pull it, right? Or am I missing it? No, I'm, I'm not saying this case, I'm saying in general.
Yeah, in general, that's true.
You pay the permit fee, right?
Correct.
At the time of application?
Correct.
Okay, that's the preferred method, I hope, goodness it is.
But I don't think you've ever taken a promissory note on somebody coming in and not having the money that day to pay you.
No.
You won't issue a permit.
Won't issue the permit.
These are all people that have been busted, for a better word, I don't know of.
Caught, we understand.
Caught, busted.
So you're enforcing a non-compliant zoning permit?
Yes, and so they get a letter, a certified letter stating that, and they're told in that letter that they have to pay three times the amount.
Got you.
Well, they come in and they say, well, I didn't get a permit, basically, I didn't think you'd catch me, and so I don't have the money.
Okay, so I come in and want to buy, want to get a permit for a building, and you tell me how much it is, and I tell you I don't have that much money, could you and I enter into a promissory note?
Yes.
Okay.
But you can't build the building until you have paid off the promissory note.
So you wouldn't issue me the permit based on the promissory note?
Nope.
Other thing I think it does, too, is, even though he was trying to skate by, if you don't give him the guidelines like Jay pointed, it gives him incentive, we're working with him, if you demanded the full payment, you're likely to go to court any, you're going to immediately go to court, that's what's going to happen, you won't get any money.
Well, she gives, I mean, you probably send them several letters, then finally I send the letter.
Right.
Saying that this will have to go to litigation if you don't pay.
And should all that be spelled out in that note, you will receive two notices, or, okay, all right.
Now, the note is, once she gets the note, there's nothing else, even then, you still contact them afterwards, hey, you haven't made any payments yet.
It's not like we have a lot.
Okay, well, it'd only take one for us to all end up in court if we're not handling it properly, that's all my concern, because.
I'm satisfied legally, this is all very solid.
Very good, anything else pertaining to the item?
If I collect attorney's fees, can I keep them?
You can keep a fourth of them, let's put it that way, thank you, ma'am.
Can I get a new outfit?
Hang around, we're going to have that discussion. Supposed to make eye contact when you shake hands?
I really didn't want to shake hands.
I know, you don't have any choice.
Because of the virus.
Next item is consideration of transfer of funds. We received an additional transfer document, so we'll have really three documents to consider today, Ms. Kelly?
Okay, so, let's do the first one I sent to you, which.
Thank you, sir.
Is.
It was nine thousand.
Nine thousand six forty-seven eighty-seven.
Correct.
I'm not seeing that, I'm seeing the first one is thirty-five thousand.
That's the second one, there was one prior to that.
They were sent in two different emails.
Two different emails.
I need to get the other one.
I sent one late yesterday afternoon.
I'll send it to you real quick.
And the one late should have had the two.
Just the, just to Jay, the nine thousand six hundred.
I think the one yet late yesterday afternoon had the two.
Yes, so we're going to deal with the first one, correct, nine thousand six forty-seven eighty-seven?
Yeah. And this is from Records Restoration Fund to the County General Fund, and what this is, is that grant that I applied for, I finally got, and so it's just catching up on some of those funds that needed to be transferred from that grant money. And so, right below the transfer, it lists the two things it's going towards, so. I County Storage, I County is where we store our documents, so that the public can get on there and look at documents, and then the recording server, that was the server that blew up last summer, and we were down for like a week, and so this just replaces that server.
I was going to ask you this question, because I don't think it's really too critical, but why is there an asterisk by I County?
Because I, that's just, I just have that there, that's my note, we never used to put a note in there about what we were trying, the reason behind the transfer. And so if you look at the other two transfers, they have the same, they have the same little.
Asterisk star.
Further defining the use, is what you're doing.
Because I looked to see what that asterisk meant, and I didn't see it anywhere, that's why I'm asking.
Okay, I move we transfer nine thousand six hundred and forty-seven dollars and eighty-seven cents from the Records Restoration Fund to the County General Fund.
I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded to transfer nine thousand six hundred and forty-seven dollars and eighty-seven cents from Records to County General, discussion? Public comment, hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, post nay? Motion carries.
Okay, so the next one, let's do, let's do the Justice Center Fund one, which is thirty-five thousand eight hundred and one. And what that is, actually what both of these next two are, are the funds that were put in the resolution that we need to transfer into the fund to get the fund started.
Is per, is it per that resolution, or the one amended? I guess it would be.
Still the same resolution.
Same number.
Same resolution. Same number, yeah.
I'll go ahead and move that we transfer thirty-five thousand eight hundred and one dollars from County General Fund to the Justice Center Fund pursuant to Resolution thirty.
Twenty.
Dash oh six, I'm sorry.
I'll second the motion. It's been moved and seconded to transfer thirty-five thousand eight hundred and one dollars from County General to the Justice Center Fund. And technically, Kelly, I hate, I hate to do this, but if we don't get it right, is it the Justice Center Fund, or the Justice Center account?
Fund.
Okay. Discussion? So, do we have a way to number these, I mean, how do we know if we were to say, hey, we want to go back and find this transaction? We just, is it, is it, you just have to look it up from General Fund to Justice Center, there's, you don't have a numbering system?
Suzie keeps track of those, those, when things come in and go out, I believe.
She's got it registered like a checkbook.
And this isn't really like a, what this is, is a.
Directive?
Takeout of my minutes.
Okay, so your minutes would be where this would be.
So your minutes are where you, yeah.
So if we had to go back and search one, we'd have to try to figure out what set of minutes that was in. Probably go to the treasurer's office and ask for a date.
That's where you come to me, and I have a little file of these.
Okay, that's what. Oh, okay, that's what. I wouldn't ask you for fi, for document six A, it would be document pertaining to transferring this money.
Yeah, and since we don't do very many transfers during the year, it's not that hard to find.
Okay. And further discussion, public comment, hearing none will proceed to vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, posnay, motion carries. And the next.
And the next one is for the seventeen thousand seven sixteen thirty-five.
For landfill.
For the landfill.
I would move that we transfer seventeen thousand seven hundred and sixteen dollars and thirty-five cents from County General Fund to the landfill expansion fund.
I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded to transfer the money, discussion. Hearing none, public comment, sorry, hearing none will proceed to vote, all in favor of transferring, say aye.
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 Aye, posnay, motion carries, we transfer seventeen thousand seven hundred and sixteen dollars and thirty-five cents. Thank you, ma'am, appreciate that, um. Good, 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 good.
Good job.
Any additional items of business, gentlemen?
Can I just add a little bit about the lawsuit you just authorized me to ratify that I already filed?
Yes.
That, it's very rare, in fact, I talked to John Naylor, I asked him how often did he have to file a lawsuit, you know, on a, for any matter, really, and he said he didn't recall he ever did in forty-six years, so filing this lawsuit was the, and it's the first time I've actually had to file a lawsuit. It's done under electronic, e-filing now, which I'm not familiar with, because that, I was on the bench in two thousand, e-filing didn't start to two thou, start until two thousand six, so I didn't even know anything about it, so when I was going in and getting this all prepared, I was afraid I'd lose everything if I didn't just go ahead and, and.
Stay right with it.
File it, which is, and then I didn't even think, wait a minute, I don't have permission, so that's why I did it, but just to explain the procedure from here on out, I would expect this individual to do one of two things, he's gonna contact Jackie as soon as he gets served and talked or to be work something out, uh, or he may just blow it off, in which case there'd be a default judgment, but either way, I want this, I want a court judgment, because once there's a judgment for this amount, it starts earning interest, and I can record it so it becomes a lien on the property, so that they can't just, you know, ignore it forever if the property is sold, and I, if we, I wanted to, I could even try to enforce collection. Uh, I could do a writ of garnishment if he's working and try to take money out of his paycheck, things like that, but, um, that's how it works from here, but I don't expect there'll be a trial on it.
So if he gets served and then he goes to Jackie and say, hey, I wanna take care of this, does he have to go to the court and file a motion to quash, or?
No, 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 if he, uh, if he pays it, then I just, will file a motion to dismiss the lawsuit. If he admits that he owes it but can't pay it yet, I'll prepare a, a document where he confesses judgment, or he can just not show up and there'll be an automatic judgment entered against him, a default judgment, but I want a judgment unless he gets it paid in full.
Thank you, sir, appreciate it. Public comment? I have one, uh, there wasn't anywhere else on the agenda to appropriately put this, I don't think, could've been under Commissioner Reports, but, um, I don't mean to dramatize this, I just wanna tell you, gentlemen, that I, I was told that there may be a pending subpoena for me to appear in court, and I believe the date is March fifth. There was a restraining order, I think it was a restraining order, not a protection order, filed in Fremont County. So, I think the subpoena will be come out of Fremont County. So, we'll see, it may not happen, but the person that was filing the subpoenas reached out to the three people that they were subpoenaing, so we'll see, we won't know.
Have you actually been served?
No, I have not been served, so that's why I'm saying, I'm not trying to dramatize this, I just wanna say, if it happens, it'll be our bad luck that it'll happen on a county commissioner meeting day.
But this is not, you're not being sued in your capacity as a commissioner, just as a witness?
I don't, as a witness.
Is this a county issue?
I don't know.
That I haven't seen the subpoena.
From what you told me in your email, I don't believe it, it sounds like.
Yeah, it, I don't know all the legalities of it, I don't know if I was functioning as a commissioner at the time, or if I was functioning as a private citizen.
I don't, from, again, what you told me in your email, I don't think it's anything to do with your job as county commissioners, that you happened to be there and, and were a witness to what was going on.
Yeah, it may not happen, it may not, I mean, I'll get served, I don't know, but.
If it's a commissioner, there will needs no more details, but let's wait and see.
Right, and if it's not a commissioner detail, you will need to know that I will most likely be absent from that, Vice Chairman Canada would conduct the meeting.
And what day was that, fifth?
Well, I don't know for sure, I'm guessing, but I was told it would be March fifth. I won't know anything until I'm served, right, technically.
With the subpoena, and even then you aren't gonna necessarily know anything other than to show up in court.
We would know the date and time, though.
Oh, yeah. That would take precedent over this.
My guess would be.
My guess, 'cause I looked into that and I don't believe, don't have any choice. Yeah, you could move to quash, but I don't think that having a meeting on the same day is gonna be relevant ground, so.
And the only thing I could say is, Mr. Canada, the rules of Robert's order are right there, you better know them as well as him.
Uh, and to your point, sir, that is my copy.
I do ha, I do have a copy, but I don't know where it is.
Okay, my guess would be on that, that, that the March fifth day, I mean, this is a person who's representing himself, there's not an attorney involved, and probably doesn't really know the procedure, but my guess is that there was a civil protection order issued, which is what we call restraining order, CPO, civil protection order. It was served, I think that that date is probably the first appearance date, there may be a hearing that day, but often it's then scheduled for another day.
Nice, um, yeah, and I may have misspoke, I think that was the idea, that that was the first hearing.
Well, and it could be so.
Could be one of the same, but it may not be.
Yeah, I mean, when I handled those for years and years, sometimes if it was fairly straightforward, I would go ahead and hear it that day if somebody was contesting it. Um, but if it looked like it was gonna be complicated, I'd reschedule it for another day.
So motion postponed way too premature, 'cause it don't even.
And they're, they're deserved, not gonna accommodate you, it's 'cause it inconveniences you.
Because it's a meeting conflict, yeah, that's what I thought, so, okay, I just wanted to bring, make you aware of that, so all of a sudden, it doesn't kinda. All right, uh, any further public comment? Uh, just another quick one, we have a staff meeting scheduled this afternoon, so.
You're in charge of that.
Yes.
Staff meeting?
Yes.
Is that one thirty?
Uh, I was gonna look real quick to see what the time was, I think it's at one.
And we'll be back here at two thirty.
Two thirty here for the saddle club.
Okay, anything else? Kelly, thank you, appreciate your time. Counsel, thanks for coming in, the meeting is adjourned. Without a break today, can you believe it? We never broke.